Ladies and gentlemen, this time I'd like to draw the meeting to order. If you please stand. And if I can ask, let's see, our tax collector is very important. Put it to the beliefs this evening, Scott.
I put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we remain standing in chief current with prayer.
As we begin our May meeting and approaching Memorial Day, let us remember our soldiers. For a nation that forgets its defenders will itself be forgotten. It is with the unspoken words of John F. Kennedy to be delivered to Dallas in 1963 that we remember. As our power grows, so has our peril. We give our thanks for the ideals of honor and faith we inherit from our forefathers, for all the decency of purpose, steadfastness of resolve, and strength of will, for the courage and humility which they possessed and which we must seek to emulate as we express our gratitude. We must never forget that the highest appreciation is not through utter words but through lived by them. Let us therefore proclaim our gratitude to God for manifold blessings. Let us be humble, thankful for inherited ideals, and let us resolve to share the blessings of liberty in those ideals which are fellow human beings throughout the world. As we celebrate this month of remembrance, we pray that God holds our fallen heroes and their families in His hand and continues to guide us as we renew our commitment to our city. We continue to pray for the safety, safe return of our men and women in service around the world today.
Amen. Thank you, James. Please call it off.
Current? Current?
Here.
Eden?
Here.
Abby?
President.
Zeberry?
Here.
Bailey? Taylor? Kova?
Here.
Agarshun?
President.
Percy?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Tabo?
President.
Sadi? Skanti?
Here.
Wettler?
President.
Hero?
Here.
Perkins?
President.
Chees?
Here.
Rattello?
Here.
Gassapala?
Here.
Axel?
President.
There'll be 20 presidents who have to look at the record reflect that Mr. Taylor is sick. I don't think he'll make it today. He's always been trying. But it's under the law. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I ask any member of the council that wishes to address the council, any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening, please do so about an item that is specifically on the agenda, and you must be a resident or taxpayer of the City of Danbury to address the council. With that, is there any member of the council that wishes to address this man?
Sidney McAdams, I'm a resident of Danbury.
Sidney, can you produce the current? And just say your address for the record.
I just wanted to introduce myself to you guys because I'm actually leaving town. I live on Pleasant Street. It's a beautiful neighborhood.
What number?
The agenda item I want to speak about is the work that Sean Stillman does with the UNIS, the Unified.
What number on Pleasant Street did she leave out?
Number 10. You know, I have a decade of issues with Pleasant Street. And the most recent is the organized sports games that are taking place on the weekends and traffic is marred and they're selling hot drugs and they're registering for teams and they're getting shirt colors for their different teams. Their playoffs are in September, October. You know, it's the second week now that it started. And, you know, I know you guys are trying to shut down these neighborhood games. They don't belong in the neighborhood. And I just want to ask you, please, to take an idea of mine and run with it. Give parking permits to the owners at Pleasant Street. Maybe only have half a dozen parking permits for parking on the street because, you know, 30, 40 people live in these homes. And the cops can take it, the cars. You know, it'll make it worth it, the police coming up. You know, if I were to get, couldn't get to a house on Pleasant Street on Sunday, and you know, what's one cop gonna do against 300 people playing sports at a residence? What's he supposed to do? By himself. You know, at least get some authority to have him give tickets for parking on the lawn. You know, make the permit violation be $250 so it's worth it for the cop to write the ticket, make some money for the city. You know, he's gonna spend a couple of hours with 300 cars. And there had to be 300 people. And this is ongoing. And I've spoken with Sean before and, you know, we've been working towards a resolution, but this last weekend is complicated. Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate your time. Any other member of the public that wish to address the council this evening?
Good evening. I'm Charlie O'Boyle. I address the 16th Wall of Lake Road. I'm here this evening because I wanted to again talk to you about the current budget that I think you're going to vote on this evening. I was here on the first council meeting after you all first received the mayor's proposed budget and asked you to please consider reducing the increase and bringing up the fact that if you were in private government or private business, you wouldn't even be able to do this. You'd have to just work with the money you have. I want to mention this this evening. I know it won't matter. I know you've already made up your minds, you're going to vote. We'll all have a 3.5% tax increase. Okay. Last year you did the same thing. So we're up to 7% in two years. It's a heck of a glide path. There's another glide path you want to take a look at, and that's the devaluation of all of our houses. Mine's gone down $50,000 in two years. So if you think that there's a report card for all of you, it's out there right now. 7.5% increase, $50,000 decrease. It's a heck of a report card, isn't it? It says you're all failing. You need to do something about it. I know, there's nothing you can do about the unions. There's nothing you can do about education. There's, gee, there's just nothing you can do about anything. Doesn't sound right to me. If it was happening in your house, if the plumbing blew up, if something went on fire, I mean, you'd act, right? Well, financially, things are happening. You guys go run the credit card. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Here, I'm a resident. My name is Nicholas Moreno. I live at 13 Pleasant Street. And I wanted to mention that I work retail. I come home on Sunday afternoon about 5:00. And there was no place for me to even park my car. I got into the house and from my deck, you can see this yard where all these people, and they had speakers out there and they were screaming out the scores. And there was no way that I could physically even be outside of my own house at 5:00 on a Sunday afternoon, let alone if I invited anyone to my home. I want to remind everyone also that the same house that's having these parties, a child was killed just a few years ago, was run over in the driveway.
My mother's gonna die soon.
What other things?
Sorry.
And I tried, I had to go out, and they had a lawn truck that was double parked, and kids were running from every side of the street. I had to physically stop my car and wait and then inch out just to get out so that nothing would happen. Something has to be done. This has been going on for years, and it doesn't look like it's gonna stop. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? They only get one shot.
I was gonna support Nick and say, you know, Pleasant Street, you guys sold it a historical overnight.
Yeah, we know Cynthia. We hear you. I'm asking diminishing, but I talked to Sean tonight about this issue. We're gonna be out there and see what you can do to help you out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if you'd be able to.
No, you're not. You're welcome any night.
I've got things to do.
I'll make sure she leaves the building.
Sorry, I'm sorry for all the calls to your office.
No, we're here. Call twice.
I'm not gonna split up Pleasant Street. Can't talk or eat in my P and R Road. A number of things. Number 14, I spoke on this earlier, which is the sewer tax. I still don't understand the rating is figured out for the flat rate. What I do find a little bit disturbing is that, with ordinance, is that if you have city water and city sewer, the minimum they can charge you is half of what it costs you for flat rates. In other words, if you don't have the city water and you're using your rates actually are cheaper than actually having flat rate. I don't understand why the rates are where they're at when they're only using half of the service that the city offers. Next one, and every time I talk on this, I feel like I'm kicking a little puppy. The capital improvement projects, the IES authority related. The reason why I have it, the IES authority, the problem I have with the IES authority over the years has been when they came in front of this council about four or five years ago, I'm not exactly sure when they first came up, they came up in front of the council and said, "We need a one-time-only $50,000. Get us over the hump. You'll never hear from us again. Please help us out." We gave it to them, and they've been back three years since. But we not only went from giving the initial $50,000, we bought a credit for them. We won the buying, we planned it was gonna be foreclosed on, that was in that area, and we've had it in the budget ever since. I don't know how we went from having the authority just becoming part of the budget to where with what's happening with this budget, we're looking at over $600,000 invested into something that I don't think we own. We have an interest in, but we don't own this. And now we're talking about taking another $75,000 to repair a building that's not ours. And I find this hard, one, we have other things in the city, like we're cutting the school budget, we're cutting, we're keeping teacher salaries, we're actually getting rate increase raises and things of that sort, to where we're going to this special interest. It's not ours, and I don't understand why we keep doing this. I don't understand why it's in the budget yet again this year. Lastly, this was the budget. There's a lot of things in here that are really questionable. It'd probably take all night to go item by item to really go through everything. I don't understand why corporation councils increasing their budget by $54,000. I mean, it's one of the highest numbers. Everything in City Hall seems to be going down, down. Corporation council is climbing, up, climbing. We're looking at a $54,000 increase just in corporation council alone. I'm not sure how we can budget the police department. We don't have a contract yet, so what do we know the numbers are gonna be at? We can't really go along with that.
We have a contract. We have a contract.
I spoke to police officers last night, and they said the contract's not done.
The contract's done. Okay. Did you vote on that by the city council on the Monday? Should we be fired?
Oh, then obviously we're not.
It's fire. Fire, we don't.
But, you know, I get a little disheartened when I look at, say, Public Works, and one of the reasons for an increase for their expenditures is the amount of gas it was fuel costing, which I understand everybody's going through this higher gas prices. But when I drive down to my shop in Shelton and I pass a City of Danbury truck coming up from New Haven at 6:00, 7:00 in the morning, I'm wondering, why do we have vehicles down there? Why are we taking care of it? So it starts to open up questions of why do we have things the way they are. I mean, Forest Department, I see that their budget went down. That's kind of nice, but I think after the last storm we had in October, maybe we need to increase them and get more of them out there to take care of some of these problems that probably happened. I mean, it just goes, it goes on and on. So really, I urge you to take a good hard look at this budget. I know many of you already have your minds made up, but it's not a real one. And I urge you to vote it down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening?
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor. Under the Council, Jim Malone, 15, Worcester Heights, Danbury, Connecticut. I'm a resident and taxpayer of the City of Danbury. First of all, I want to start by thanking you for doing what you do. There are a number of us in this room, obviously the diocese, who have been in public life. And we know it's not easy. You get pushed from every side, from left, from right, from top, from bottom, and you do the best you can. I know that, right? And I appreciate that, and I thank the mayor for what he's done, for the Head Start program and for other services in the city over the course of time.
Did you say that again?
Yes, sir. I believe it's on tape. In fact, it's on film, Mayor. But I am here because I really am concerned about the direction we're going. This year, because of the superintendent and his staff, they did an amazing job on negotiating the health costs for the Board of Ed. The projected increase is 5%. They ended up with a decrease of 5%. That's a swing of 10%. That's more than a million dollar swing. They did an amazing job, and they pulled the rabbit out of the hat. That half, that rabbit will be there next year. The governor's putting a billion seven extra money, we believe, into Danbury's education budget. That rabbit won't be here next year. So I truly submit to you, we're not only out of rabbits in Danbury, we're also out of hats, all right? And we really have to think about what's happening. Five years ago, in '09, the education budget of the City of Danbury represented 57% of the total city budget. This year it's 52.7. That's a swing of about $5 or $6 million. And it shows, you know, you've heard from the education people, it shows that they've cut and cut and cut. Last year, it was freshman sports. This year, it's Head Start. Now, I think, as I said, the rabbit was pulled out of the hat, I think, we're over the hump this year. But, boy, we are heading in difficult times. And the mayor's right, I've heard him say this publicly, that he has to consider all of the people in the City of Danbury, he has to consider the people whose houses are being foreclosed and all of those issues. I agree with that. But I'm gonna tell you, the education budget didn't cause that problem, and cutting the education budget isn't gonna solve that problem. In fact, I'll close with the thought that it's the other way around. There are eight big cities in the state of Connecticut. Five of them are in big trouble, financially and educationally. Three of them are hoping they're up, Danbury and Norwalk-Stanley. Why? Because their education program is strong. You can go to the public schools in Stanford, you can go to the public schools in New York, you can go to the public schools in Danbury, and you can get a solid education. Two of my girls graduated from Danbury High. My oldest went to Tufts University and enjoyed Washington Law School. My middle daughter went to Villanova, and she's planning on going to graduate school. You can get a quality education at Danbury High. And that keeps your property values up, not down, keeps your property values high. And it keeps the City of Danbury the kind of city we need, the kind of city we want, the kind of city we've been blessed with for generations. And I'm here to say, we're at the edge of going in the wrong direction. So put your consideration. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing done then, we'll move on with our regularly scheduled meeting. I have a number of announcements, so just want to put the order for the council and for the public at large. First of all, May 6th was, is Fred Biscotti's birthday. Fred, happy birthday. May 10th is Mike Haddad's birthday. May 12th is Mike Haddad's wedding anniversary. Custom, a couple of items I just want to share with you that are on the agenda that I want to highlight. May 3rd is the Connecticut DCF luncheon. It's National Foster Care Month, so that'll be a cafe at Green from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. May 3rd also, Dave's RV Center is giving their customer satisfaction awards and a lot of support for our local businesses. May 3rd is also the Amy Beckley Company host, the spaghetti dinner. May 4th is Law Day in the City of Danbury, the Danbury Barber Association. Of course, May 5th is Cinco de Mayo. And it's also Opening Day, right, Mike, at Danbury Baseball, and that'll be at 11:30 a.m. We also have the Ecuadorian Civic Center Soccer Championship League Day starting at 11 a.m. on Sunday. May 8th is a hospice breakfast. You can see your favorite, really different things. May 9th is Antonio's Public Works Awareness Day, so you have to go to that because he's so proud of all the ways. And also, it's great for the kids. How many students did you have there last year?
About 125.
125, Dan, I did help every public school student go and learn about Public Works and get to ride the tractors, it was a lot of fun. May 10th is the Rotary Club's Fireman and Policeman of the Year. And May 11th is the Danbury Veterans Council Recognition Day, the Danbury Lake Club. West Coast Graduation, that is the master's degree graduation. 13th is their large graduation. May 15th is Spreads of Richard Park Breakfast. It's an important event, riding and can dream this year, and it's a fundraiser for Richard Park, their final one in C3. May 15th is the annual ROTC Awards banquet. In addition to that, May 28th, let's get forward a little bit, is the, well, actually, May 23rd is the Danbury District Park Award Ceremony. I think that takes place at the headquarters in the community room. Clean City Danbury is May 19th. Fred's already volunteered to work, right, Fred? We work at Rogers Park, right?
All day.
Right? All right? And all of our council people will be spread out throughout the street, helping out our residents as we pick up the city. We also are still recruiting clean teams, so if you know an organization, Boy Scouts, service organization, whatever, that wants to participate, we encourage you to do that. In addition to that, Memorial Day Parade is May 28th. That begins at 9:30 a.m. Step Off, if you really want to do the whole thing, you can meet us at St. Joseph's Church at 6 a.m. for the Mass, and then we go around the city to all the various memorials in their respects to our divines and their family. And I just want to mention, because it falls before the next meeting, June 3rd is Portuguese Day in the City of Danbury, our annual flag raising and parade. We're still working on the Portuguese Cultural Center, so we haven't quite got the picnic back yet, so we are gonna have a good time. And you're welcome to join the Exupery Memorial Field, 8 a.m. for the flag raising, and then we'll do war for the Mass, and then we'll be going to parade. That, and nobody, is all the events that are taking place in our May. An extensive list of time review. For any information about this, you can contact Lisa in my office, and she'd give you more details as to where the best time is to go. Now, just so that, I do have a special announcement tonight. Over the weekend, a council member here in the City of Danbury, his family was recognized for the work for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. So I prepared a mayor's proclamation, if I can add the acknowledgements, I can present it to that family. It's the City of Danbury Mayor's proclamation, the hereby known as all for mayor, and the citizens of the City of Danbury honor the Hall's family for their commitment to the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. And whereas in April 28, 2012, Danbury's Hall's family received a distinguished honor of being named one of the Fairfield County Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation's Gala Honors. And whereas the Hall's family has provided the Fairfield County JDRF with significant support and contributions for many years, being an important awareness and support for juvenile diabetes and its research, Hall's Farm Market on Pembroke Road runs a successful pumpkin painting fundraiser. It's a great time, encourage you to go. Well done. Every October at the farm, a tradition for the entire community for many years. And so tonight, we celebrate this honor with the councilman Michael Hallis and his family, and we recognize them for the dedication and commitment to JDRF. I also want to thank Laura Hallis as well for all of your work. So therefore, I wish out that I, Mark D. Mountains, mayor of the City of Danbury, hereby honor councilman Michael Hallis as well, and my entire family for their devotion to JDRF, the families who are affected by juvenile diabetes. Sign this first day of May, 20th, on the City Hall as signature and sealed the race of the January. So, Michael, thank you for it. With that, we'll move on with our meeting. Mr. President, can we have the minutes, please?
Your Honor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion. I mean, we're reading in the minutes, as all members have copies, the copy is on file in the Legislative Assistant's office.
Second, motion, May 2nd, Mr. Vengrash, the venue changes, corrections, the beliefs of the council as presented. Seeing done, I'll try your lines acceptance of the minutes. All the members can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. I say the motion carries. The answer, this majority leader, may we have the consent calendar?
It's three, May, consent calendar for May 1st, 2012, three things is filed. Number one, receive the communication confirming appointment of Michael Castillo, a fellow and member of the Environmental Impact Commission, and the term expires December 1st, 2015. Number two, receive the communication confirming Edward Moore Jr., Democrat, as a member of the Conservation Commission, and the term expires July 1st, 2015. Number five, receive the communication proving disposal of surplus vehicles and miscellaneous equipment pursuant to the requirements set forth by Section 2-153 of the Code of Ordinances. Number nine, receive the communication adopt the resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Health Department to apply foreign set funding from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for the, for national health and gaming services block grant. Number 10, receive the report to the City Engineering Civil Action and Sanitary Sewer Station at Ryder's Lane, the Southern Boulevard, Area Project Number 05-14. Number 11, receive the communication adopt the resolution authorizing the listed agencies to apply foreign set funding in the form of tax credits from the State of Connecticut to the Neighborhood Assistance Act. And that serves the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Representative, Mr. Pleasure, Council. You guys can give this now.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second, motion, May 2nd, Mr. Perkins, all favor of the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. I say the motion carries. Madam Court, amendments one and two are on consent as issued.
Communication, amendment to Court of Ordinances, Section 6-1A, withholding approvals and delinquencies. Dear Mayor and Council members, potential fine of proposed amendment to the section of our Code of Ordinances that presently intermits the withholding of building applications where someone is delinquent on a variety of payments to the city, such as taxes or utility. As is consistent with state law allowing such approvals, we seek to clarify the portion of this section that defines what may be held in the event of such delinquency. This will now include all building approvals from the initial building application through the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy. While we feel that this has always been the intent of this section, it is best to clarify and set it forth in clear language. The Building Department and the City Permit Center typically coordinate such approvals and will work together in implementing the change, consistent with present practices. Please refer this to committee and or public hearing for further consideration. Very truly yours, Lazzol El Pinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Court, Mr. Pleasure, Council, Mr. Cal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for regular number three, Code of Ordinances, Section 6-1A, with all new approvals and infancy to a public hearing.
Second, motion, May 2nd, we discuss it as related to the emergency.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good chair to the Corporation Council. Mr. Pinter, in our agenda on Section 3-2- Mr. Pinter, in our agenda on section 3-2, there seems to be, and I just want to get this on the floor before we go to public hearing with this, there seems to be an implied confusion between the body of the ordinance and the title of the ordinance, because the title of the ordinance, the underlying capital, says approvals where the applicant is delinquent. And the body seems to suggest we're talking about the property. So if you can clear that up, I appreciate it.
It will clear it up if there's any confusion at all, the applicant.
Let me get Mr. Pinter, are you ready for the hearing?
We'll clear it up if there's any confusion prior to the public hearing, but it would be the applicant who's delinquent.
So if the applicant has a basket of properties, and if one of those properties is delinquent, we're going to withhold permits for all properties, is that what we're saying?
Well, we're, no, we're going to, it's the applicant who owns that property, that particular property. But we've got to tie it to the applicant, because it's the applicant who will be submitting whatever requests they're submitting, so we have to tie it to the applicant. We'll clear up any confusion about that to make sure that the applicant is tied into the property.
Okay, so if I may, the property's tied to the applicant, but we're still, we're still talking about a petition, and it's singular. In other words, somebody could, property C could be in arrears, but to improve property H, and if he's just doing property H and not property C, this would not apply. Is that essentially correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Further, I'd just. Seeing none, then, all favor of the returns to all the hearings, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposition?
Communication, investment, and how is the statement?
Which pleasure council, Mrs. Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this, send this to an ad hoc to incorporate Corporation Counsel and the Director of Finance.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following, Mr. Levy will be the chair. We'll put, let's see, who's got time? Fred? And, I don't know, Mr. Chaney's. Have fun with us. It'll be a test, maybe. Madam Clerk, item five was, I can say also, I just want to be clear that we have Director Finance, all of the leaders. Item five was on consent, Madam Clerk, item seven.
Communication, application for decoral assessment increase, Malimo Air Controls Incorporated.
Which pleasure council, Mr. Bergers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to refer this to an ad hoc with Corporation Counsel, the Director of Planning, Director of Economic Development, Director of Finance, and a representative from the mayor's office.
Ad hoc shall sit the following, Mr. Colville in the chair, Mr. Darcy, and Mr. Biscotti. Item seven, please.
Resolution, Cross the Stone Castle Grant Application, Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, to Mayor Brown, members of the council, from Dennis Alpern. Attached for your review and approval, is a resolution authorizing Manon Brown to apply for a grant from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation. The application is for grant funds for community slash historic action plans to hire a multi-disciplinary team to fashion a realistic strategy for restoration of our stone castle and to analyze potential future uses which will complement activities of Terry Wall Park. The planning study will consist of three phases. One, an update of previous evaluations of the castle, and which of its budget estimates to repair, stabilize, and secure the castle to prevent its further deterioration, and a market analysis of potential users and fundraising strategies. Number two, preliminary plans for opening the castle for limited use. And three, a complete needs assessment and cost estimates to fully restore the castle in ground. Study will provide the basis for a capital campaign to raise funds for restoration work. The grant, if approved, will be administered by the Department of Planning and Zoning. A team of representatives from the Terry Wall Park Authority, friends of Terry Wall Park, and the Danbury Museum and Historical Society will join the department in reviewing the planning study. Public outreach will be an integral part of the process. We anticipate that the study will take about nine months to complete. We are requesting funding from the trust in the amount of $50,000. We are also requesting from City Council approval to provide, if needed, additional funding, up to $5,000 toward the cost of the study plus in-con services, including access to the professional planning staff, contract administration, and invoice processing. This application is contingent upon approval by City Council, anticipated at your May meeting, and certification of funding by the Finance Director. A resolution is being prepared by Corporation Counsel under separate cover.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, which pleasure counsel, Mr. Colville.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept the communication and adopt the resolution to authorize the mayor, Mark Bowden, or Dennis Alpern, as is designating, to apply for and accept funding from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation.
Second, as you made seconded by Mr. Perkins, discussion related to this main application.
If I may, through the chair, to Edred Alpern. You know, $5,000 is a small price to pay to maintain or stabilize, or hopefully to restore this asset, which is one of the most important assets in the park system. But at this point, there really is not much to stabilize. I mean, the interior, the roof is in the basement. Stabilizing might be keeping the wall from collapsing at this point. What's, what's the plan, where we go? This is, it's in bad shape.
Well, I know it's in bad shape. What we want to do is determine what it would take, just to, this is number one in our three phases of the study. And it is front-loaded, admittedly. We want to determine what it would take, just by the term, by the, the word stabilize, I mean, to put it in a position where it's not going to deteriorate any further, and where it is safe and secure. That may, that may mean somewhere.
I think if I could just give you some background on this, Mr. Rotella, I was approached by this organization, and who have been very aware of the castle. And we spent probably a good couple hours in the office with the representatives of the historic trust, kicking around the, you know, the castle in general. And really, it became very clear that while we have a master plan, as you know, you guys funded that for Terry Wild, so many years ago, we don't have a plan for the castle. And really, this is just about developing a strategic plan for the castle. How are we going to use it? For what purposes? And then, how much is all they're going to have? Simple, we're leaving the palace here. But right now, because we can't apply for, we don't know what we're going to do with the castle, it's hard to apply for money, because the first thing asked is, what are you doing if you want to go over and kind of about this? So the idea here is to use this money to survey the community, to say, okay, what's, how do you, what do you want to do with this particular asset, as you mentioned, and how best can we utilize it, given the fact that it's in the basement, given the fact that it's severely deteriorated, given the fact that there aren't utilities there, and all that's going to happen. And I think the plan at the end will be able to accommodate those problems.
So if I may, then perhaps the information that we glean from going to the community may dictate the type of restoration we would undertake.
I, I want, I just want to be clear with the council. This does not mean we're going to completely rebuild the entire castle, the roof. It could come back, and they can say, yeah, this ought to be an observation zone. And, you know, and we'll clean it out, take the roof out, and shore it up, and use it better.
Thank you.
What we need to do is determine first, what kind of uses you want to put this castle to. So when you go further along and take a look at restoration efforts, those restoration efforts will support those kinds of uses that you have selected. So you could use first, then you take a look at the structure itself. Now, we're going to do all three. And if we find that the total price for a complete restoration is, well, I don't want to say, I don't want to say it's too much, it's going to be high.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot. But we also know that Terry Wild now has an organization, Survivor One C3, all the friends of Terry Wild Park, and they are very interested in starting a capital campaign to raise private funds to help offset the total loss of restoration. But we don't know what any of that is, the mayor pointed out. We don't have a strategy yet.
You know, I, I think we'd all love to see a restoration, but very few of us would like to pay for it, so.
Oh, it's been the story of this government in the 24 years that I've been here, and it's a sad story. Because at first, when I first came here 24 years ago, Greg Alonso took me out to the castle, and we went inside, we walked around, went upstairs. There was a little bit of problem in the ceiling, you could see some water damage. And it would have been very inexpensive to stop that, but nobody wanted to pay a nickel. And now, and now we're going to have, we have millions of dollars for restoration, and we're facing, we just purposely let it, well, I should say, benign neglect, let it fall away.
You know, it's a history lesson, but not to put too fine a point on it, when the property was sold to the city, there were people living in the castle. It was all human.
I know that. Okay, that people way to the weeds.
Thank you, Mr. Alpern. All right, thank you, Ms. Alpern. Any other discussion? Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was looking back, and Dennis knows I'm pretty familiar over the years with the, with the castle. The thing that probably will get my yes vote is that this is a capital fund, that the, they want to raise the money on their own rather than save money. But the report I have in 2004 was a million dollars at that time to stabilize it. So, but on the basis that this would be private funds.
No, it may not be in part.
I think we're like way putting the cart before the horse. Let's just see what the report says before we talk about how we're going to fund it, whether it'll be public dollars used in that. My suspicion is whether it's this administration or future administrations, other projects would take a much higher priority over than, than the castle. It's always been a dilemma, right? You've got to build bridges, you've got to build schools. We don't have a couple million bucks to throw into the castle. But Francis has agreed that they were trying to develop a capital campaign, they're actively raising money already. Let's see what the report says, and we can make some decisions. I'm not cutting you off necessarily, I just don't want to, I think it's premature to say how you're going to fund the repairs, we're not sure how we're going to use the castle.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds, all's in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Resolution, FEMA fire prevention and study grant. Honorable Mark Bowden, the council, from David St. Blair, Director of Finance. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Fire Department to apply for and accept funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is FEMA, through its fire prevention and safety grant program. This fire department plans use awarded funds to assist the community risk reduction division in education and safety enhancement activities. The maximum funding for this grant will not exceed $200,000. FEMA funds 80% of the total grant, which is $160,000, and the city will be responsible for funding 20%, which is $40,000. If awarded, required city funding will be available in the fiscal year 2012 and 2013, and fiscal year 2013 and 14, departmental budget. The City Council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting. Please contact me should you require any additional information.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, which pleasure council, Mr. Wetmore.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to allow the Danbury Fire Department to apply for and accept funding from FEMA through its fire prevention and safety grant program.
Second, as you made, seconded by Councilman Biscotti, discussion under the FEMA grant. Mr. Chaney.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question to the Director of Finance. When in the sense that you need to pause for the 20% budget in this current, it would be in the fiscal year 2013. So that would be the budget we're hoping on, coming on. Is that funding already in the budget?
They have enough room in the budget to absorb that $20,000 from this company, and for that year. If, if they're awarded that grant, that's what happens, is you can reposition some of this, so you can make that.
If you had awarded it, what happened, $20,000 again?
No, because those folks, his resources would be allocated somewhere else. I mean, that, it's not straight, you know, it's not a straight grant for, you know.
Yeah, that's what I was calling out.
Respirator. Right, right. So he can allocate some resources that are currently being expended to this, to this cause, for this grant. So it'd be matching funds. So these funds are currently being expended, so he would reallocate it for this replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Any other discussion? And then I'll try your minds on the FEMA grant, all favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Item nine was consent, item ten was consent, item eleven is not consent. Madam Clerk, item twelve.
Item twelve, ordinance of resolution, and ordinance making appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013, and a resolution levying the property tax for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, which pleasure council, Mr. Colville. Your Honor, this.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the government, the budget report, as all members have copies, copies on file in the legislative assistant's office.
Second. The motion's been made by Mr. Colville, seconded by Mr. Bergers, have we waived the reading of the reports? All was in favor of waiving the reading of the reports, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposition? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll enter a motion regarding General Government One Budget Report. Mr. Calhoun.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the General Government One Budget Committee Report and adopt the recommendations as presented.
Second. As you made, seconded by Mr. Bergers, is the discussion under General Government One Budget Report. Mr. Sine.
Thank you, Your Honor. Under General Government One, I was on that ad hoc committee, voted the negative, but, and we'll be voting negative on this item. However, I will hold my substantive comments regarding the budget overall to the final motion, as I understand to be on actual ordinance making appropriations.
Thank you. Any, this is going on a further discussion of the General Government One. Seeing none, then, I'll try your minds and acceptance of General Government One, all favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposition? Mr. Sine, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. Rotella. Okay, Madam Clerk, sorry, Council of General Government Two Budget Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to make a motion that the council receive the report from the General Government Two Budget Committee and adopt the recommendations.
Second.
As you made, seconded by Mrs. Nishel, discussion as regards to General Government Two Budget Report. Discussion made for General Government Two Budget Report. Remember, you left that to discuss the general budget overall. Seeing none, then, all favor of the acceptance of this report, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those are negative, you know, raising that would be easier. Mr. Rotella, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Amiro, and Mr. Sine. Item C, Education Budget Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the new report and adopt the committee's recommendations as presented.
As you made, seconded by Mrs. Stanley, discussion related to Education's Budget Report. Education, Budget Report. Mr. Sine.
My apologies, I spoke too soon, Your Honor, and said I'll hold all my comments. It's going to be made in motion at the end. I know the question, Your Honor, you, to the chair, more to the chair, possibly through the chair, to the Director of Finance. I was recently on a Board of Education workshop and budget meeting, a budget discussion meeting following the workshop, and there was discussion of like 1.7 million that Mr. Bowden is even potentially from the governor's budget, and a lot of contingencies related to the line of state money. But there was a statement that the mayor has said, or the city has said, that if this money, either in or in part, is not forthcoming, that the city. money, either in law or in party, is not forthcoming, that the city will make that up. And I didn't ask any questions or going to or bring that up at that meeting, but just wondering if that is accurate or if it's maybe a slight, I would say, inflation of maybe what our statements, or your statement was.
Yeah, I appreciate that kind of, Mr. Sade. Let me just say, Mr. Sade referring to the $1.7. Depending on state dollars, depending on who you talk to, it's either referred to as alliance money or additional funding districts, he's going to have to resolve that, and I think he'll have a bill by the end of the week as it relates to this. I met personally with the governor, I also met with the Commissioner of Education related to this money. With due respect to Mr. Maloney, this is a, this is a five-year commitment for this money. This isn't just a one-shot deal. In fact, it's the intention, not mistaken, today's news about the deficit, it is the intention to add to those dollars each year. So the governor's calling this a down payment on future money to the City of Danbury and the other alliance districts. There are some conditions in terms of how you can use this money. We spent a lot of time reviewing the process and what would qualify and what wouldn't qualify. It is clear to me that qualifying dollars would be what they call a net new activity. It does not mean, though, a net new program. But it does mean you got to do something a little bit differently than you've done before. And I can kind of understand that and actually support that concept because what the governor's saying, or what the administration is saying, is that we want accountability for the new money forgiven. Keep in mind also that money goes directly to the Board of Ed, it does not come through our accounts here at the City of Danbury. And it's done in monthly installments consistent with the school improvement plan that we'll be filing later in the month of May, once the legislature is in session, out of session. So that's sort of how they view that. Now, to your point, to your question, as it relates to, well, you know, this whole harmless thing, let's say that the Board of Ed goes up and for whatever reason, the commission says, I'm only going to give you 1.5. I don't think we'll do that, but we'll say that's what happens. Then will we have to Mr. Stanglair and I work closely with Ed and the team over at the Board of Ed? How do we get that all up to the 1.7, which they're trying to work on? That won't take the form of a blank check to the Board of Ed, we're not holding for that. But what we are saying to them is we recognize uncertainty about this money. We may have to rewrite the school improvement plan a couple of times to meet the needs of what they're looking for in their mind. But I think after meeting with them, if they're comfortable, that will more than qualify for that money, mainly because we'll show an activity, but also because we're already doing a lot of things that they're asking for in the communities that aren't doing. So we'll be able to really start our stuff as it relates to other services we're on. So I hope that makes sense.
Mr. Rotella, Your Honor. Hoping that they'll get the 1.7 or at least a significant amount of it. If we were to make a differential on that, depending on where our budgeting is, where expenditures and revenues are, is that something also that we could draw from? Fund balance, or we look into our certain line items that we have, or we can squeeze out a few more dollars?
No, I would counsel, the council is counsel, not to draw on fund balance. What we have done is we've done a long-term strategic analysis of the Board of Ed budget, and we looked at every single line item, looked at their history of expenditures. We presented the board with a list of, I wouldn't call them cuts, I would call them adjustments in certain line items that we think we can be able to make it up. I mean, it's also dependent on how much we're talking about. Again, I don't see that as happening. What is a greater risk, I think, is if they just blow up the whole program and say, we're not getting any more money because we've got, you know, $300 million deficit, so we're not, you know, that's my dig is here. If that money is allocated, we'll get it. But we would not draw that, we would have to sit down, yeah, we might invite this team at the finance office, the superintendent, and start looking at some of the transfers that are going out of the state committee at home. So that's our plan.
I thought through the chair, I believe the finance director, acting finance director of the Board of Ed is here. This may be a more appropriate question for him. Is the 1.7, I apologize if I didn't pick up on this at the workshop, I don't believe it is, but to confirm or not, whether or not the 1.7 million is already earmarked, or is, if it is received, it would then be utilized for new programs or new features of existing programs? Or are those dollars already counted on in any particular way earmarked or otherwise in the current budget that the Board of Ed is going to vote on? I can understand what it means to me.
It's earmarked for full day kindergarten in one phase. We'll have a list of all those requirements at the budget at our next board meeting. But it's above and beyond. There's eight new positions in there that we need, three science teachers, ESL teachers, so that's above and beyond. That's why bringing the, bring down the achievement gap so we can make it narrow, that's why the 1.7 million, we have to report that to the governor to get that money. So it's above and beyond what we have in our budget.
Additional dollars on top of the current budget?
Correct. We'll have that list as, you were at the last meeting, they wanted that list, and they'll have it for Wednesday.
Thank you.
Mr. Chiesi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I attended that last Board of Ed meeting, and one of the things that surprised me was that they were able to negotiate their help by reducing it by $700,000 by going on to the state plan, which starts July 1. So my question is, to the finance director here, has the city looked into that same plan? And can we also utilize the same savings that they did?
We have looked into the plan a couple years ago, but we're going to, we're still looking at fine tuning our rates. Keep in mind, our plan has changed until October, so we're still negotiating our rates. We put an amount in the budget that we feel comfortable with. However, we're looking to try to fine tune the rates of the city right now. And if that doesn't work well for us at Cigna, we will put it out to bid and get a lower rate. And if that means going to the state, we'll do that, too.
The biggest problem we had with the state plan specifically, two problems. One is that it's a different plan design than what our employees, we just negotiated. We'd have to go back to our unions and get them to agree to take the state plan, which requires negotiation. Now, once the union hears that you're saving $700,000, we're going to want, you know, we're going to want to trade something off because they're going to, they're going to perceive that money as well, if you're helping to save this money, you've got to do something for us. So that's a problem for us. Secondly is, from the last time we looked at it, they don't give you a blended rate. Right now, the reason our rate is where it is is because we blend in our retirees with our active, and that keeps the rate down for all of the, all the people that participate in our matter. The school board, they have a slightly different situation. They don't, they only offer COVID, they don't have to offer retiring medical. We, for years, have offered that, we don't have, we changed that, but as you know, but so we still have a legacy, legacy out there, retirees that are receiving COVID from the city. So many people are raised, they don't get the blended rate at the state, they only look at your active employees. So on paper, it looks really good, but when you add in the retiree's, it brings a lot out of it and actually costs you more. Having said that, we're going to continue to negotiate with Cigna. We did our thing last year, we switched from Anthem to Cigna, and that's where we're, in this budget, that's where we were able to save some money. That, we won't find that amount of savings again this year, but that doesn't mean we're going to lower it and just pay what we give, so we're going to negotiate with you, beat up on it as much as we can.
Further discussion on the education part. See, none of that, I'll try your minds, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition, raise your hand. Mr. Sade, Mr. Visconti, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. Reddick. Okay, item D, entourage placement, I mean, first question. Let me see, Mr. Card.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion for the public works reported about the committee's recommendation.
Seconded by Mr. Negroschek. Discussion under the public works budget report. See, none of that, I'll try your minds on acceptance of the report, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any others, please raise your hand. Everybody wants a hamburger.
Thank you.
Item E, Health, Housing, Public Safety, Welfare, and Social Services Budget Report. Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the Health, Housing, Public Safety, and Social Services Report and adopt the committee's recommendations.
Seconded by Mr. Rotella. Discussion under Health, Housing, Public Safety, Welfare, Social Services Budget Report. Thinking specifically police fire. Yes, Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to take the opportunity to mention a couple of our departments that really go out of their way to give grants during the course of the year. I said it at the ad hoc committee, and I'll mention it again here. Part of my duties as legislative leader is to, I hope you can second me on it, we get to read at every meeting. And when you do that, you get to notice who's giving grant monies to the city and who's, I shouldn't say who's not, who's really working hard diligently to give those grant monies. Scott Leroy from the Health and Housing Department, and Paul Estefan from our civil preparedness in the airport, which really go out of their way to do some hard work for the grants that this city gets. It saves us in the hundreds of thousands, and I'm sure closer to the million dollar range when it comes to the monies that they've got. No disrespect to the other departments that have done the work, but these two gentlemen really need a pat on the back for the amount of work that they do through their departments to gain money so that the taxpayers don't get to succumb to that burden. So I thank you both of them, and thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Matt, further discussion under this particular budget. See, none of that, I'll try your minds on acceptance, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition, raise your hand. Motion carries the amnesty. I guess nobody wants to get pulled over by the chief. At this time, we'll take a motion to make, Mr. Colwell.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the city council adopt the ordinance making appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013, along with a resolution that sets the mill rate for that same highest period of $22.45.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Seconded by Mr. Seaberry.